All right, welcome. This is a regular school board meeting of the Tri-City United School Board. Tonight is Monday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we are located at TCU Performing Arts Center. So I will call this meeting to order at six P. M. Role call finds all present. And first up will be our administrative report.
All right, so I will start, and then I got a few people that are gonna speak after me. So just a couple of quick updates. As I lose the earpiece. Anyway, just wanted to share that still been going to the Minnesota Great Star Cohort, which is sponsored by M.A.S.A., continuing to learn, to dive more into this role, and to obviously learn more about what it takes to be a superintendent in the capacity of leading and learning in the district. So we just met right prior to the M.A.S.A. conference, which was up in Brainerd, and going through a lot of different groups and interventions up there, just to sit in and listen to different people talk about what it is that we need to learn as we grow into this profession. Obviously, a lot more than you anticipate, but it's nice to hear from the president of M.A.S.A., the outgoing president of M.A.S.A. And then we had a pretty good speaker in Dave Webb, who was talking about how to lead a team as rounding the bases from first, second, third, and fourth, then coming to a consensus as we learn and listen from each other. So pretty dynamic. And right after that was the M.A.S.A. conference. I think there was about two hundred and some superintendents up at Maddens, up in Brainerd, like I said. And just listening to people share their ideas and thoughts with each other from their districts, I think is probably the most collegial part of doing that. And learning from them as to what they're hearing and saying from their districts is pretty dynamic. I went to some things on financial performances and how to learn more about the finances within the superintendency of the district role. So pretty interesting things as far as listening to rising property valuations and just learning the dynamics of, you know, what it takes when people get their actual statement from the city, what that actually looks like in comparison to the A.D.M.s from our student counts. So that was a lot of learning for me as well. Social media update, if you're able to check out the district website, it has changed. We are still modifying that to some degree. I have a meeting on Wednesday to finish some of that modifications. Most of it is done, I believe, except for a little bit of the coloring, a little bit of the district directory. Anything else that anybody knows of will more than obviously work on that. So it looks great. It says a little bit more about us. It's a little bit easier to look at from your cellphone and from your computer. So really excited about that process, as that was something that definitely needed to be done to keep us up to speed. And then speaking with local businesses, which has been really awesome. Lane Wilbright and I have been going to some businesses. And listening how we can partner with local businesses to support our C.T.E. and support our overall programming for our kids to look at pathways on their way out. And just that dynamic piece of what is it that our kids can actually get before they leave high school? And really moving our kids outside of the four walls, just to let them know what is out there. And as I've mentioned in the past, looking at how we bring that down to seventh and eighth grades and then move those kids forward, so they get some experiences before they go. At the same time as when we partner, then we have them supporting us and we support them. So I was at Winco last week, and just to have them now come to us and see what we have in our shop and in our supportive needs for our students is pretty cool for the fact that now we can stay up to date as well. So we're gonna continue to look at more businesses. As the next few weeks come, I have a few more set up this week and a couple next week. So that'll be a lot of fun, just to see what's actually in some of those businesses and see what's out there. Began conversations about creating, improving our world's best workforce in the document for the state. So David Bernard and I will be discussing that here this week and beginning that process to gather a team and start looking at our strategic plan and our world's best workforce again. We had some conversations centered on some intermediary paths for our preschool and kindergarten, looking at how we bridge some of the gap between some of the kids that aren't quite ready from preschool to kindergarten, and giving them that option to further develop their skills if they are not quite ready for kindergarten. So we're looking at some state support and some things for that as well. And we've had some conversations on our counseling and social work status. As you know, we have a couple counselors at the high school and working with the four-year plan and working on social emotional needs. The need is there, but we just need to figure out how we can collaboratively look at supporting our kids and making sure that we are pretty well mindfully set and kids are ready to approach the day in a way that they can get the help, not only from that perspective on a social work side, but on the side of how we can get our counselors to actually work on a four-year plan too, so that we can create those pathways that I just talked about. So some exciting things that I've been looking at with that. And then just a few other things. We've had our first district-wide administrative meeting centered our focus on some purposes and our pulse. And then just talking, and I'm gonna bring him up here in a second with David Bernard. We redirected some of our teaching and learning, like I've mentioned numerous times, to back to some basics, so that we can get our teachers to support the needs of our students and make those relationships that we can have centered for our teachers and our students to move ahead. So with that, I'm gonna introduce David Bernard. He is our Director of Teaching and Learning, and he is going to say a little bit about where things are headed and what he's been working on. Thanks, David.
Good evening, everyone. Sure, can we okay? So as Kevin shared, my name is David Bernard, Director of Teaching and Learning. Due to TCU and the position, I, my wife and I relocated to Bloomington earlier this spring, and I found myself kind of heading in this direction. And I'm glad to be able to be here to support Tri-City United Schools and have had really great opportunity. Well, thanks, Larry. To work with the administrators and the teachers and some of our early professional learning and opportunities there. So really engaged in kind of just building relationships with administrators and teachers right now. Kevin alluded to a number of things that we're working on. Again, great teachers, great administrators here. I love doing what I do. This is my thirty-eighth year. I know I don't look that old in education, but I've been around just a little bit and kind of am really looking forward to leveraging some of those opportunities in terms of supporting the schools here. And just some of the early work, I think, probably has been on, everybody works really hard. And just kind of with the pandemic and kind of shifting focuses, it's kind of coming back a little bit to saying like, if we are all working on some of the same things and going in the same direction, we're probably gonna have greater movement and momentum going forward. And so that's really kind of what we're working on. So I had shared a document with you. You have access to it. It is just kind of a simple overview of kind of a really big process that has been undertaken by the district at this point in time. So we have shared kind of an initial vision statement for what we want to have happen in Tri-City United Schools. And that really comes down to have some of those four bulleted areas that you see listed in front of you. And it's really starting with having that guaranteed and viable curriculum. And so we've probably heard that language before, but what we're really looking at is our state identifies standards. Other professional organizations provide standards for educators to teach. And if we were to actually map out the standards that are available for teachers from a K through twelve lens, that thirteen years, actually, it would take twenty-two years to teach all of those standards. So we have way too many. So what we're doing is we're working with teachers to prioritize what are the most essential skills that our students are going to need, both now and when they finish their educational experience in TCU. And so we're looking at what are those skills that have leverage, which have endurance, which have relevance for our students right now as well. So we're engaged in that process and will really be then saying like, defining really specifically for our students in kindergarten, here are the things that we can expect them to do by the end of their first year in TCU schools as a kindergartner. And as Kevin alluded to earlier as well, we're in the process of building kind of a shift from a K-12 to an E-12. So we'll be looking at some really intentional ways of partnering with all of our early childhood programs, partnering with our communities and families that maybe don't take advantage of or are not able to take advantage of our early childhood programs, to make sure that we talk about what does a student look like who's ready for school in TCU. And really kind of starting with some of those foundational literacy skills and really helping families and students understand how to really be good, ready students when they come into our schools. And that requires a different partnership than what we've had in place before. So it's really mapping that out in a way where we're really gonna be clear about what are those skills that our students, our youngest students, really need and how do we help communicate that with our families, so that there's a different degree of readiness and opportunities there as well. We've got some great structures because of our early childhood programming, the work that Lane is doing, and just in terms of outreach with communities and families in that respect. So we're working there, kind of on that whole guaranteed and viable curriculum process, to make sure that we have really mapped out. So we'll be able to do some good communication here about what are the skills that our students going to be expected to demonstrate or learn by the time they get through each of our grade levels or each of our courses as they move through seventh through twelfth grade and start taking some individual courses. We're also looking at, kind of focusing on high-leverage instructional strategies. So we know, or we're learning more and more about the science of learning. And so we're taking practices from implementation science and improvement science. And we're really saying, if we focused on these four or five practices and they became standard practice in all of our classrooms, we would see a change in outcomes for our students. And then once we kind of work on normalizing or standardizing some of those practices, we would add other high-leverage practices. And so instead of trying to put like fourteen things out in front of everybody, we're looking at what are those three or four things initially that have the highest leverage? Once we have those in place, then we can move forward into some of those other areas as well. Really looking again at just promoting that whole sense of teacher efficacy and that collaboration that takes place among teachers, because we know that when they're, when teachers are given the opportunity to learn and work with one another, they have the opportunity to increase their effectiveness as well. So we're really trying to get all of our arrows for all the times that teachers are learning with one another together, to make sure that we can kind of say, how do we best capitalize on that time that we have? And of course, someone in my position is always looking for more time to engage in shared learning, work with educators, because it is so foundational to improving their practice as well. And then just looking at, again, professional learning and coaching. And probably where we're seeing coaching come into play would be just in some of the changes that we're making with our evaluation system. So we are moving from kind of a standardized evaluation practice to one where we're really working toward coaching. And so our principals are working right now on integrating a new system for evaluating our probationary teachers. And so they're having more reflective conversations that allows for some growth-oriented kinds of processes to come through. So much like students, sometimes as educators, if we see a score in terms of an evaluation, we get fixated on that and we don't hear what all the good information is in terms of how I can get better. So we don't want a score to be a hindrance. We feel like we have really good ways of measuring effectiveness through what our principals are looking at in partnership with the teachers. And when we do all of those things, you know, those four things that you see listed there, we believe that student learning achievement and agency will increase, so that we would have students who are leaving TCU after their thirteen-plus years of being in the district to be work-ready, life-ready, college-ready students and learners and adults. And so what you're seeing on the bottom of the document are just some short-term strategies. So these are some of the things that I started working on really immediately when I started in July to put into place. And so for each of these items that are numbered, there are work plans with goals, with ways in which we're measuring the effectiveness of some of those as well. And then you'll see on the backside, just some of the practices that are ongoing strategies of things that we need to continue and will continue to work on in terms of really identifying what does it mean to have a teaching and learning program in a school district? And again, great people who were here supporting processes and programs before. Having something that is centralized, that can provide a certain level of coordination, really elevates what it is that we're gonna be able to do, both in terms of effectiveness for our teachers and for our students. So I think it's really an exciting opportunity. I've said everything with almost one breath, so I'm gonna pause and see if any of you have any questions for me at this time.
I want to say thank you to David, just for Document Dave, as we call him now. Dave's got really good follow-up and structure with what he offers, and it's very clear to all of our staffs, especially our administration, because it is a little bit of a process, because anytime you implement some change, it's not a lot of change, it's just going, like I said, going back to basics. It feels like a little bit of anxiety that comes at teachers. But I think we've settled in pretty well, where they know that it is just that. It's going back to the real basics of teaching. And David has put us in a place right now where I feel like we've done that. And the evaluation process I'm also using on the admin, because the coaching of people makes them better, right? Like David said, just giving somebody a five, just to give them a five, because maybe I like Josh, you know, doesn't do justice to the teaching of our students, right? So we're going a little bit more of the coaching evaluative process that David mentioned. And I think it's gonna be really significant just for our teachers to make that relationship, not only with their administrator in their building, but also with each other in their groups, their grade cohorts, and so on. So thanks, David, for the work that you've been doing up to this point. I've already seen some really dynamic changes with that, so thank you.
You're welcome, yeah. And just one other thing, I know like Jean and I have the opportunity to do some partnering as well in terms of conversations with Kevin. And so I bring, one of the other areas that I bring is a way of looking for additional resources and revenue for schools. And so there'll be opportunities that you'll hear about. And Jean and I were just working on something today that will show up probably, you know, early spring. But then there are a couple of other things that will impact our ability to provide more support for students and for staff. And the beauty of all of this is that it won't increase the bottom line for the school district. Actually, in some cases, we have the opportunity to reduce some of our expenses, so that's a good thing. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Dale has a couple of notes from Southwest Metro and South Central Service Cooperative.
The last Southwest Metro Board, three things came out. Number one, the continuing back to increase of students there. We are in the process of working on the strategic plan. The idea was to look at maybe our own resources with superintendents. In the previous meeting, last meeting, it was discussed that concerned by board members that maybe the individual superintendents would be spending too much time putting this together. So Thursday the thirteenth, we will be interviewing four groups of people who will take us through the process of strategic planning. The last thing that came out of the meeting is that the board voted to give Darren Kunitz the permission to start negotiating with Eastern Carver County for the East Union School, an area that we need to look at for the possibility of expanding our programs. Had a great conversation with our superintendent this morning. And yes, it's a great idea, that type of a thing. I think it will be a tougher sale than what Darren sometimes thinks. And I think even for us at TCU, what is being sold at for us is it will open up spots in Jordan if we, for those level, high-level-three, level-four students. Superintendent Babcock and I were talking this morning. You know, is it a possibility that maybe we here at Tri-City United with some of our buildings can start to look at those type of, and housing those type of programs here? Also then, the South Central Cooperative Conference was held up at Maddens. Kevin left, I moved in. I didn't tell you, I was in room thirty, three thousand and one. I don't know which one you were in.
I was twenty-four twelve, Dale.
Great, great conference, great speakers. A couple of things that really stood out. We had a three-panel discussion, Roger Moe, former senator, Kurt Scherko, the executive vice president of MSBA was there. And then the president of the Minnesota School Board Association and had a tremendous discussion to a person. Fall elections are gonna be a big thing as far as what's going to happen in education this next year. The idea that the superintendents have come up with fourteen lists of things, and they're all very, very practical. Tremendous support at the conference for those ideas. I brought up the idea with what about mandates? And it was interesting in listening to the reply there. The reply is, one of the parties, if you are getting more money, they want more fingers attached to the money, and thus comes the mandates. And so it's, you know, it's interesting. On Friday morning, we had the state monographer come in, and she spoke on population. Right now, if you look at schools in the state of Minnesota, we are short eight thousand employees, superintendents, principals, teachers, janitors, so on and so forth. Totally in the state, we are short two hundred and fourteen thousand workers. Overall, ninety-three thousand is probably the much truer number of what we're short. And she said it won't be getting any better for the next foreseeable future. She brought up the idea that Superintendent Babcock has brought forward to us the idea of selling your school district, offering those type of things out there for the people that work here and keeping them here, the type of thing. She brought up a number that really made all of us smile. We see in the news the number of migrants that are coming into our school, into our country. And that number is, you know, in the thousands. But it is now the same number that are leaving the United States and going back to their own countries. They come back and they see, you know, we just don't hear that in the news. Mexico was brought up. The economy has improved there, and people are going back to be back with their families and so on and so forth. So great speakers. If you ever have the opportunity to hear, he is called the Retired Deputy. He is a motivational speaker, and yes, he delivered a great message. He is a retired police officer, chief of police from Detroit Lakes. Phenomenal singer, guitar player, but really had excellent messages. I think this was the, of all of the ones that I've gone to, the information that was given was just unbelievable for us. And I made a comment to Kevin this morning when we were meeting. I think as a board, we need to maybe pay attention a little bit more to South Central Co-op, not just because I sit on the board. I think they are a group of people who are moving very, very strongly forward in many educational opportunities.
Thanks, Dale. We can move on.
All right. I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin Huber, second by Dale Boss, to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven-zero. Next, we have the consent agenda. Up first is our approval of our minutes of our nine-twelve, two thousand and twenty-two regular school board meeting. Under Personnel, we have Appointment Ending. Alma Estrada, Cook's Helper, TCU Lee Center. Amy Granau, Paraprofessional, TCU Montgomery. And Chandler Roman, Special Education Teacher, TCU High School. Under New Hires, we have Alma Estrada, Assistant Cook, TCU Lee Center. Andres Hernandez, Kitchen Helper, TCU Lee Center. Gazelle Sanchez, Paraprofessional in Kid Zone Eight, TCU Lee Center. Amber Hack, Paraprofessional, TCU Lee Center. Amanda Bezek, Par educator, District Wide. Dennis Napper, Part-Time Custodian, TCU Lee Center. Jill Casper, Paraprofessional, TCU Lonsdale. Lisa Spikers, Paraprofessional, TCU High School. Rebecca Wiseman, Seventh Grade Girls Basketball Coach. Alicia Claire, ECFE Teacher, District Wide. Katrina Bastier, Kitchen Helper, TCU High School. Under Leave of Absence, we have Haley Suwija, TCU High School. Jennifer Dieterman, TCU Lee Center. Michelle Nading, TCU Lee Center. And Lydia Guthridge, TCU Lonsdale. We have approval on the bills in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eight cents. Also, our financial report. If there are no questions, I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Josh Belkey, second by Chris Velasquez, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven-zero. Next, we have an open forum. And if we had any requests to speak to the board, all right, so we have no requests for tonight. We will move on to our informational items, and first up will be our monthly enrollment.
So as you can see, enrollment is staying pretty consistent. We had a few that went to homeschool off of that, and a few that went to online. Other than that, we haven't had any other reasons for students to leave outside of those two. So staying pretty consistent is what we started the year with. You can see it's eighteen-seventy. We started the year with eighteen-seventy-nine.
Perfect. Okay, next up is our community engagement.
Do you want to speak on this at all, Trevor? And people that were at the facilities meeting, that's the community engagement piece. So we had a facilities meeting last week, just bringing in ideas and thoughts about how we start planning forward as to some of the needs that the district has. Site Logic joined us in that meeting. And we just sat down and had a conversation on how we begin to and continue to move forward, all right? So that when big items come up and things come up, that we have it on a plan to move forward with that. And out of that meeting, it was somewhat suggested that we begin a community advisory meeting to get people involved, to share what their experiences are in the communities and some of their ideas as to how to look at moving some things forward within the district. And the school board charges that master planning committee advisory team, it's a citizen, I'm gonna read a little bit of this, based group of district residents to serve in that capacity, just like I said, so that we get all stakeholders to the table to really look at the full needs of the district. Master planning community advisory team, we're looking at meeting approximately seven times. And once again, to break out into small groups to get input. times, and once again, to break out into small groups to get input as to some things that maybe we'd like to look at. And I don't know if Trevor and Kevin Dale, if you want to join in on any of that? I got a little bit more from Site Logic that I could read, but...
So, yeah, so that was more or less, Site Logic is going to help us with our ten, fifteen-year plan down the road. So they want to do some community engagement, which they brought up before in our meetings, but they want to start that fairly soon. So by the end of the school year, we have our ten-year plan in place, what TCU looks like, and we want to obviously, not just the seven of us up here decide what it's going to look like, what the community members, our stakeholders, want the district to look like in ten, fifteen, twenty years. So I thought we had to vote on it, Kevin, but we just, we gave them the green light last Wednesday to go ahead and start the process?
No, we haven't given them the green light yet.
Okay.
So we can most certainly do a vote if that's what we want to do tonight, but we have not given them the green light yet. All I have is the information from them.
Okay.
And and that's it so far.
Okay.
So...
So, yeah, it wasn't them spending any more money. I mean, we're already, this is the relationship we're building with Site Logic, just to start the the ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan of what TCU is going to look like. So, yeah, that was, they're waiting basically from a green light from us, saying, go ahead and and start contacting members of the community, the three communities to sit down in the next month, really, they want to start.
I think one of the other things that came, you know, when we start to look at community engagement, just like in the past, making sure that we have a great cross-section of all of our TCU citizens from all three communities, agriculture, business, so on and so forth. I think they have a good team in place that will look at that, you know, can't think of her name, Kevin and Trevor, but she...
Cat.
She just made the comment, you know, that, you know, as we look at these somewhat applications that, you know, we make sure that that everybody is well represented, and that, so...
I will say I had to leave slightly early for the meeting. I had another meeting after that one, so I left just to get into the community engagement part. But one thing that I brought up, or we did say, is expectation is, is Site Logics are leading the meeting, but they're not leading what we're looking at. That's got to be up to the communities to look at. We don't want any, I don't want, myself, I don't want Site Logic to go in and say, well, this is what you need to look at, we need to look at this, and point things out that they feel are important, because that's what maybe some other administration feels is important to them. We have to look at what's best for the complete district, not for individual, you know, cities and communities. So hopefully, they will not steer it, they will just lead it and let the committee, or let the committee steer.
Yep, it's good you said that, Kevin, because it's, you know, they're recommending, right? And then we look at the bigger picture of what they recommend, because sometimes we maybe don't see some things that from outside perspective they may see. So it's good that they are just involved, I guess is a good word, that they're recommending that that piece of the puzzle, that sometimes we can look at some things a little bit differently. But yes, you are correct that obviously we make the final decisions, and we look at things as to what we actually need here as a district. But they do just give that little bit of perspective and some insight as to some things that they see and and want to share with us. So it's very helpful that that they can do that and help us plan that community piece, because they've done it a lot, and they can bring in some some people from all sides of the table to really share and entertain what it is that we're going to be looking at. So I'm glad you said that, because it is recommendations from them.
And to be honest, I don't even know if we need to vote, because this was something that was discussed...
That's what I was just wondering, do we need to?
Yeah, I think they discussed this long ago in in a lot of our meetings, and so that's, I was assuming that they were just going to, that was just part of the process. So to be honest, I'm comfortable with them moving forward, as long as they're clear on the expectations and things from, you know, the direction that needs to happen.
Yeah, I think they just wanted us to share it as a whole, because obviously, it's just the few of us that are in the facilities meeting, so I think they wanted it to be shared and then have an agreement that we want to go forward with it.
Absolutely.
Because it will involve, obviously, outside numerous people, and trying to figure out a number that is conducive, so it's not too many people at table, but it brings in the right pieces of the puzzle. You're looking at the dynamics of different types and different groups of people, so that's the part that they kind of help us with, and make sure that we're, once again, well represented around that table, and, you know, what our our dynamic culture is and so on. So, yeah, so they just wanted it brought to the table.
Yeah, perfect. Anything more? Okay, community updates, facilities.
I think we just covered that.
That we just covered that?
Yeah. I kind of put them both together, sorry.
And then next would be our community ed advisory council.
All right, so we met last Monday in Lee Center. We went over a few of the items. Fall catalog went out August first, and the winter catalog for community ed will go out December first. Youth sports are just starting to finish up, soccer, volleyball, flag football. Few other notes here, it looks like we're sending about ten to fourteen participants to Special Olympics State for bowling. Adult programming, pickleball just started up. Let's see here, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, community ed launched on August first, a new website, Elio, much easier to use, very friendly to the user, so take a look at that if you can. I think that's about it.
Is that for the registration process?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, please take a look.
Good deal.
Hey, was youth wrestling opened on there?
Oh, Trevor.
No.
How many times you guys meet? Is it like four times?
Once a quarter.
Once a quarter, okay.
We've never had an update until now, so...
I was going to say, it was one of the first, so...
We'll start adding them.
Good deal, all right. All right, thank you. All right, next we'll move on to new business, and first up will be our donations for the month.
Be resolved that the school board of Independence School District number two nine zero five accepts with appreciation the following gifts or donations, and permits their use as designated by the donors. Mayo Clinic Health Robotics, two thousand dollars. TCU Basketball Boosters, a basketball shooting machine, two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Holy Redeemer Church Student Supplies, four hundred and ten dollars. TCU Titan Wrestling Club New Wrestling Mats, twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. National Eagle Center Community Ed Youth Enrichment, two hundred dollars. Special Olympics, Community Ed Special Olympics, five hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. And Hlitsky Brothers Incorporated for Robotics, one thousand dollars.
All right, it was introduced by Chris, I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a resolution for the donations, introduced by Chris Velasquez, second by Kevin Huber. This will be a roll call vote. Dale?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Marcia would be a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
A roll, resolution has passed by roll call vote, seven zero. All right, next we'll move on to our twenty-two A bond series.
Hi, yeah, okay, come on. Superintendent Babcock, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval for, of the ratifying resolution for the twenty twenty-two A bond series. The bond pricing and final costs are in line and slightly lower than those estimated prior to the bond sale. So as determined and directed by the TCU school board, TCU sold five point zero seven five million in long-term facility maintenance bonds on September thirteenth. The board's approval of these ratifying resolutions is another step in the bond, oh, it shouldn't say bond refunding process, in the bond purchasing process. These will fund LTFM projects as described below in table one, this is on my summary. But so just some key highlights, the true interest cost, thank you, there you go, that's just my summary. The true interest cost was three point two six percent. The term is ten years, and the amount is five point zero seven five million, which is slightly lower than the actual amount of the total projects, but that'll be the bond premiums that we get, we'll pay for that difference. Part of it is indoor air quality projects, so two point nine six five is indoor air quality projects, that does have a taxpayer impact. It'll be about just over forty-seven dollars a year for a two hundred thousand dollar home. The deferred maintenance portion, which is two point one million, does not have taxpayer impact. That is going to be our, we're borrowing against our future LTFM funding, so we will have less, forty percent less LTFM funding year over year to use for projects. And that's just something we've we've used in the past, and something that they allow districts to do, to be able to fund larger projects instead of having to save up over time. A couple of notes on the sale, they were sold on September thirteenth, and on the thirtieth, Matt Ranapah from Baird sent me like a hypothetical, if they had been sold at the current market price, it would have been an interest rate of three point nine four percent, so an increase of point six eight, and it would have been another two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of cost to the taxpayer, so even just like two weeks difference. So that was kind of amazing to to see, the timing is so important. And then just, there's a attachment on there on like the preliminary, what was shared with the board in advance, and then what the final was, just to show that it's within one penny of the anticipated impact for ag, and it's a dollar forty-eight less than what was anticipated for the household. So just saying, it was in line with what had been presented prior to the sale. So this is probably the board's final step in the bond sale. So I don't have any questions.
Nice work, Jean.
Yeah.
Yes, we did celebrate the prior two weeks of the interest.
Because it's rising.
Yes, it went up really fast.
All right, we need a resolution.
I'd like to introduce a resolution relating to five million seventy-five thousand general obligation facilities maintenance bonds, series two thousand twenty-two A, ratifying the award of sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof.
I'll second.
All right, we have a resolution introduced by Chris Velasquez, second by Trevor Hohn, for the approval of the twenty, or two thousand twenty-two A bond series ratifying resolution. This will be a roll call vote. Dale?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Marcia is a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Resolution has passed by roll call vote, seven zero. Thanks, Jean.
Thanks, Jean.
There's a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, again. Our band choir, spring twenty twenty-three trip, I believe they did a presentation to us.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Who seconded it? Chris? I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, second by Chris Velasquez, to approve the twenty twenty-three spring, spring band choir trip to Florida. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero. It looks like we need to change some board meeting changes for our locations for our November fourteenth and December twelfth board meeting locations to the TCU High School Media Center due to events happening here in the Performing Arts Center.
I did this wrong, that's not the December date which we already changed, that has to be the January...
Oh, so you have January here and December in the, okay.
No, it's supposed to be January.
But we don't have to do January, because we have it, we should do January, because that would be already be on the schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's my year.
So it's January twelfth? Is that the date?
Honestly, I don't know, I totally missed it.
No, it's okay.
January ninth.
January ninth.
All right, January ninth, thank you. All right, so our November fourteenth and our January ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting locations to the High School Media Center due to events happening here in the PAC. So I will seek a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
So I'll read that one more time. I have a motion by Kevin Huber, second by Trevor Hohn, to approve or to move our November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and our January ninth, twenty twenty-three regular school board meetings to the High School Media Center due to events happening in the PAC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero. Next, we have a policy, seven twenty-two.
Yeah, so I'll read a little clip here from MSBA. So MSBA recommends that districts adopt the updated policy, which is seven twenty-two, because the update consists of Minnesota statutory provisions that each school district must follow. Board adoption can occur in a single meeting under model policy two zero eight. In recent weeks, MSBA has heard from school districts that they have recent questions regarding district policies on individuals' request for data about themselves or their child, quotes, data subjects, specifically the questions that focus upon Minnesota statutory law that is not directly quoted in model policy seven twenty-two. So to assist school districts that may receive similar questions, MSBA and its law firm determined that the simplest approach would be to include all the legal definitions related to data, and to add the Minnesota statutory language on data subjects to policy seven twenty-two. In addition, MSBA enhanced the legal references section to clearly establish the legal basis for policy seven twenty-two. So in a nutshell, they added some language, some definitions, and some terminology to make it easier for families and so on when they're looking to get data from districts. So that's what they're looking for in that new policy, not new policy, updated policy seven twenty-two.
All right, I'll seek a motion. I'll second.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Josh? I have a motion by Kevin Huber, second by Josh Belkey, to approve policy seven twenty-two, public data and data subject request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero, and it looks like we will be approving all of our winter coaches. I'll pull that up here quick. So it looks like we have boys' basketball, girls' basketball, wrestling, and this would include all hired coaches, paid coaches, and volunteer, dance team, boys' hockey, and adaptive hockey. It looks like we are full as far as coaches go, which is great.
I'll make a motion.
Perfect.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, second by Dale Busch, to approve the twenty-two twenty-three TCU winter coaches. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero. I will seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Chris Velasquez, second by Josh Belkey, to adjourn the meeting at six forty-six PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero. Meeting is adjourned.